Invite everyone to join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Happy New Year to everyone. Seems like a long time since we've met. We'll open the meeting with an opportunity for public comment. If anyone is here to make a public comment, I welcome you to do that now. Okay, moving on. We will get to the first item of business, which is swearing in of a fire lieutenant, Jeff Gartside.
I'm Jeff Gartside. Thanks again for having us. This is a great -- we really look forward to these opportunities. We're recognizing the retirement of one lieutenant and the new career of a new lieutenant. So Jeff Gartside is our new lieutenant. It's actually started yesterday. I just want to read something quickly from Jeff's lieutenant, Lieutenant Tim Maguire. Couple of paragraphs that Tim wrote a letter in recommendation of Jeff. Tim said, "I can speak from personal experience that Jeff has what it takes to command as an officer during an emergency. Jeff has the right mindset to stay calm and think clearly in stressful situations. His level of readiness, both physically and mentally, is exactly the quality needed for this position. It is clear to me that Jeff has the confidence and the respect of his peers within the North Andover Fire Department. He is capable, confident, and committed to the mission of the department. Jeff has taken every possible step available to him to make himself the best candidate for the promotion. I would feel extremely confident in Jeff's abilities if he were to be promoted." Jeff was one of three candidates that went through an interview process, and I have to say that I was quite impressed.
Oh, no.
I'd say this is the first time I congratulate you.
Be safe, guys. Aw, that's too bad.
Lieutenant finally says, "I would feel extremely confident in Jeff's abilities if he were to be promoted." Jeff was one of three candidates that went through the interview process, and he actually blew me away during the interview. I'm extremely confident how prepared he is for this position, both professionally and mentally, as the lieutenant said. So if Laurie wants to take Joyce's place here?
You can stand here. So raise your right hand. Can you get up to me? Aye. State your name.
Aye, Jeff Gartside.
So I only promise and affirm?
So I only promise and affirm?
That I will faithfully, honestly?
That I will faithfully and honestly?
Sincerely and impartially?
Sincerely and impartially?
Perform all the duties that are incumbent upon me?
Perform all the duties that are incumbent upon me?
As a fire lieutenant for the town of North Andover?
As a fire lieutenant for the town of North Andover?
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Jeff's going to have his wife Stephanie come up and place the badge on.
Almost effectively excellent.
And I might add that Jeff does have some large shoes to fit. Lieutenant Bob Bonifant, whose last day was on Friday, was an officer for 20 years, and it's a lot of knowledge and that the Fire Department is going to be losing all at once. But again, Jeff has prepared himself for this position, professionally developing himself with fire office courses, and again, we're extremely confident that Jeff is going to be able to fill the shoes of retiring Lieutenant Bonifant. Little story about Lieutenant Bonifant. He had a way of painting a picture. Chief Dolan, who Lieutenant Bonifant and I both came under -- Bob and I started the same day, October 14th, 1986. We started on the same day. We went to the Fire Academy together. And I do remember Chief Dolan describing, "When you get on scene, you need to describe what is happening so the people that are responding behind you and the dispatch has a good idea of what you're seeing, and they can picture that in their mind." Well, when Bob was done sizing up, you knew the color of the house and whether or not the lawn needed to be cut. So we are going to miss that. Bob was quite colorful on the radio, but he was always calm and extremely professional, and we are losing a lot of knowledge. So I appreciate you guys recognizing retiring Lieutenant Bonifant tonight.
Absolutely. I'll read a certificate of appreciation we have for you, Lieutenant Bonifant. This is such a certificate of appreciation presented to Robert A. Bonifant. For over 32 years of dedicated service to the town of North Andover, starting as a firefighter, advancing to lieutenant in 1999, and serving as the fire prevention lieutenant for the last three years. Your professionalism, dedication, and integrity has been a credit to yourself, the Fire Department, and the entire town. Thank you on behalf of the town of North Andover, and the best to you in your retirement. Presented by the North Andover Board of Selectmen, January 14th, 2019. Can I get a picture with the two of you? Thank you.
You should be the rose between two thongs.
That is unusual. And Jeff, I always -- you've heard about this. I always give the opportunity for someone that's up, you know, a new candidate promotion, if you want to say anything, you're welcome to. Okay.
Do you have a story of the badge tonight? Do you have any of the story of the badge tonight?
The what night?
The story of the badge.
No, we don't have the -- so the lieutenant badge is really -- they have no number, so there is no --
Oh, I see.
But I did think about this on the way down, that maybe we'll start about a little history of the lieutenant that he's replacing, which you got a little bit of that history tonight.
Yeah, so you can film that.
Yeah, we can film that. So again, thank you very much. We appreciate you allowing us to do this here in a public forum, and it means a lot to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Since the chief is here, I don't know if everyone would entertain moving out of order and doing the consent item to vote to approve the contract for the fire chief.
Madam Chair, I began conversations with both the police and fire chiefs sometime ago, probably four to -- you know, time flies, but somewhere in the last six to eight weeks. Made sense. Both chiefs have performed well. Chief McCarthy has been exceptional in his communication skills, the way he's assimilated to this very difficult job. It's been a great pleasure, quite frankly, working with Chief McCarthy. His contract was nearing its first -- the end of its first three-year period. Took the opportunity to engage Chief McCarthy with the possibility of extending his contract, of which I highly support and recommend to the board. It only made logical sense to obviously have rolled Chief Gray into discussion, whose contract expires several months after that. So with that, I highly recommend that the board extend the contracts of both Chief McCarthy and Chief Gray.
So we've had a chance to see these, obviously, and they're the final signed -- or final versions are in our packets, I don't think.
Yeah, so Madam Chair, I'll make the motion that the board is not going to approve and sign the contract between the town and Fire Chief William McCarthy.
Second.
On favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
With our thanks for your continued service.
Absolutely.
Well, again, I want to thank the board for the confidence you have in me, allowing me to do something I love. I truly do, being part of this Fire Department, I always have. I really enjoy working with all the departments in this town. It's been great working with the town manager and his staff. So again, I look forward for the next three years and trying to expand on a few of the things that I've accomplished so far, but there is more that I would like to do, and I appreciate the opportunity to continue. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. So, moving back to our regular order, we have the distinguished budget presentation award from the Government Finance Officers Association. I don't know, Mr. Mailer, would you like to speak to that?
Sure. Madam Chair, back in 2012, we began conversations with altering the structure of our budget to provide more information to the reader, the residents, and other stakeholders, to make sure that it became not just a financial document, but a communication tool, policy document. And the standard, really, the gold standard for budgeting within governmental agencies is the Governmental Finance Officers Association Budget Document, and they put out standards by which we have to comply and follow. And we began in 2012 submitting our budget documents to the GFOA, which has representatives from throughout the country and, quite frankly, all of North America. They set up panels that evaluate budget documents and determine whether or not we meet those standards, and with Lynn Savage's leadership and direction, we've been able to satisfy that association now for the seventh straight year that our budget document represents really the gold standard and what's expected. Typically, I haven't looked recently, but somewhere between 15 and 20 communities in the entire state get this award. The combination of communities that get both the budget award and the, we call the CAFRA award. In total, there's probably less than a dozen statewide, so it's a reflection of the professionalism of how we do things in North Andover and the leadership of our financial team, which is centered around, of course, Finance Director Lynn Savage. So we received notification today that we've got that award, and I want to recognize Lynn and her staff, the great work that they did.
Absolutely. I want to congratulate Lynn for what an amazing accomplishment, and it does serve us so well. I thoroughly appreciate the document, and I do think it's very understandable to a person who maybe hasn't been following our town government on a regular basis, and they want to start getting more involved in understanding, and I think it's a very, I mean, an excellent tool, an excellent output that she creates, so.
The thing about Lynn, when she first started, she came from the private sector, and she quickly took the necessary courses and taught herself, and she has been great from, really from day one. It was amazing, and continues to be amazing.
So, too bad we don't have her here, but we'll thank her when we see her in the office so the public knows that, how wonderful she is. I'm glad we had the conversation. Okay, the next item is the approval of our December 17 minutes in our package.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from December 17 as written. Second?
On favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. The next item, next two items are very generous donations. We have an acceptance of a donation from Elizabeth Armstrong to the Fire Department in the amount of $500, and another donation also from Elizabeth Armstrong to the Police Department in the amount of $250, which is very appreciated. Do I have a motion to accept?
Madam Chair, I move approval.
I'll second that. With the expectation in the letter of thank you, will be sent to Ms. Armstrong for both donations.
On favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Unanimously. I can never say that word correctly. And then the next item is a donation from the Joseph N. Herman Youth Center, Inc., to the Youth and Rec Services in the amount of $8,700. This is funds that they raise for the annual auction for youth center memberships for families that don't have the ability to pay for a membership, so highly appreciated so that everyone can enjoy the great resources that the youth center is for our town.
I move that the Board of Selectmen accept the donation of $8,700 from Joseph H. Herman Youth Center, Inc., to Youth and Recreation Services to be used for memberships.
Second. On favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Motion to move licensing? Motion to move into licensing?
I'll second that.
On favor? Aye.
Okay, into licensing. We have on the agenda requests for six one-day wine and malt licenses for dinners and the farm stand at Smolak Farms, but we're going to table five of those, and I would ask that we just take action on one tonight. And that really generates from that the building inspector is working with Smolak to make sure that they can properly accommodate a slightly larger capacity for some of these other functions. So I'd like to give them the opportunity to work that out with our building inspector. So we just have the single request on January 18th of this year from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the wine and malt licenses for Smolak Farms for January 18th, 2019, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Second.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. And then the only other item we have immediately is Merrimack College. And again, side note, I know we keep saying this, but we are working town council with Merrimack to pull together that more comprehensive licensing, as we kind of outlined last meeting in the interim. There is a request for two one-day liquor license applications for Merrimack College for events to be held on the 18th and 19th, and we've got all sign-offs from the departments in here. Can I have a motion if there's?
Move approval. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. And that takes us through licensing, so I'll have a motion.
Motion to move out of licensing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Seriously. Back to consent items. The first item is the approval of our town manager's annual performance evaluation. Sorry if you got this sort of late. That was the -- what you received was the compilation of all of our feedback. I don't know, I don't remember if we typically like walk through it as a -- everyone read it, I assume, and as every year, our town manager got a very exemplary performance review, of course, trying to include some areas for focus, but overall, I mean, what a fabulous year we had. Our town manager just continues to provide such strong leadership to our town, I mean, as evidenced by all the great things we have in town, all the -- our AAA bond rating, our -- all the buildings we've seen be renovated or built, the great collaboration we have between the departments in town and the staff in town. All those things are referenced in the document, and obviously, the very just wonderful support through the Columbia gas disaster. I mean, that, everyone, everyone referenced that in the review, and we so appreciate your great leadership during that crisis, from at the macro level and dealing with state government and Columbia gas, and to the very micro level of every individual that lives in town that was affected, that had a problem. I mean, the phone was, we were always open for that, and I think did a, just a really amazing job leading us through that crisis and continuing to go forward, so thank you for that. I don't know if there's other points you guys want to call out on the performance review?
I would just say, seeing Chris and having kind of a nautical theme going on tonight, I would just say, you know, that any leader can bring us through, you know, calm seas, but when things get turbulent, as we had last year, you know, and as you referenced in your fine speech this morning, starting with the cannabis last year and all of the issues and controversies we had around that, and then, you know, right through the gas thing, you know, steering us through those real turbulent times are the ones that where, you know, your true leadership skills emerge, and not emerge, but really shine. So thank you for that, and we really, you know, we really appreciate your work and your dedication through those times because it meant a lot. And I think that was very evident for those at home. We were at a breakfast this morning for all the managers and mayors of the area, and Mr. Mailer gave a speech about the state of the town of North Andover and was, received an award for leadership, I believe it was, through these times, along with the Mayor of Lawrence and the Town Manager, Manager Flanagan, from Andover. So congratulations on that award. It's well deserved, and the three of you did an outstanding job during that whole part, and continue through that crisis and continually through that.
Dare I say, you know, the Mayor of Lawrence said that he was the angry one. Andover had the pretty one. And we had the smart one, and frankly, I would want the smart one, so I will not comment on your looks because you are our employee, but I will say that I am definitely somebody who very much am grateful that that's how your peers see you, and that's how it was projected in the community, and I think that we all agree that that's a trait.
And I think he said the good-looking one. I don't think he said the pretty one.
That's true. I was so distracted by--
It's actually referenced in here, and I read it, and I'm like, how did they get that in there so quick?
Because it repeated off.
The congressional one, yeah.
Over too often. Of course, I never can pass the opportunity to have a sports reference, but truly, it's like our favorite quarterback. It's not just your performance, but it's really how the team responds to it. And to me, that proof, you know, it's all smooth sailing, using analogy, on smooth sailing, everything works. When it gets stormy and those challenges come up, it's really how the rest of the crew responds, and they respond independently and collaboratively. And again, I think that's the real measure of your excellence, and although we hate to have to have it proven in the way it was, it really has, and it's nice to be able to say to folks in this community, this is, these are the abilities and the capacity that our town manager and the town employees have here. And now you've seen it firsthand, not that everybody wants that experience, but now that they've seen it, I think there's a real wow factor, and I think that's, there's been a real kind of, the silver lining of all this is people go, wow, we really have an amazing group of folks that support our town, and thank you for leading that.
Madam Chair.
You know, when I was writing it, I basically said, you brought all your skills, all your training, all your negotiating skills, and everything down to bear on this tragedy, and organizational skills. And then, with that, you brought great talent that gave us that great program, and everybody was on board, everybody worked hard, and you really, you did a great job.
Appreciate that.
And it was tough. I mean, it was day-to-day, moment-to-moment, things were changing, and you know, but the one thing that kept coming up today, but even through it all, the majority of the people kept calm, they accepted what was happening and did their best to go through it with their family, and it could have gone the other way. It could have been a really angry mom, and--
That's true.
And we were fortunate, and I think the entire Merrimack Valley, well, or at least the three communities, I think that they also benefit from your experience and the way you handled it, so, thank you.
Well, I appreciate the comments. For the folks who were not there this morning, my comments centered around the community and the people here. I think there was no better reflection of the community to really face the challenges that Selectmen Valenko had identified from the beginning of the year all the way through. We certainly didn't know September 13th was going to happen, but as a community, I think that there's no question that it could have been worse, not only in terms of damage and loss of life and all those kinds of things, but it could have been worse if it was a community that was not as close knit as this particular community. My comments this morning also identified those folks. We talk about the first responders, and we should. It was truly an amazing response, not just locally, but regionally. But for you folks, it's really a challenge. People don't, I'm learning over some time, you know, 25 years and still learning, that's for sure, that I do recognize what the folks at home may not, that it's, it is really interesting and challenging to know this is going on, hearing from your constituents, hearing from residents, and knowing that we're running really fast here to answer all of the questions that we're getting, and you folks are managing that, meaning prioritizing the things that seem like they really need to be prioritized, setting aside other things we were working on for close to three months. And so your leadership has been to really manage that flow of information, to help prioritize those things that really were essential to continue, at the same time managing the messaging and tolerating the pace of decision-making. So we always criticize government as being somewhat slow in the decision-making process. This event didn't allow that, and your tolerance and patience with allowing those decisions to happen and dealing with that is not the natural build of what a selectman is supposed to be do, be doing, and so this board has been exceptional in that regard, and so, and I think you should be recognized for that. I think it's fantastic. It's made all of our jobs easier, and I meant my comments this morning as well, that there were folks here who had to continue work. There was folks right after the event who had to set up a claim center. You know, I don't think anybody's job description was this expectation that you had to set up a claim center, so whether it was IT staff or other staff managing that claim center, taking those calls and managing those. I think not enough has been said about your support in actions or the actions of the other staff members that are not first responders, who really are taking on responsibilities they just never anticipated having to do. So it's been great, including all the way through the most recent business events, having been downstairs as residents have participated, they were sort of happy to be in the lobby and to interact with employees who were there, handing out gift cards, maybe that's why they were happy, but nonetheless, it's been great. So I'm fortunate in that I have great support by both of the folks at work here, and you folks have made the job easy, and I certainly appreciate the score. Doesn't all come down to math, I guess, but in the end, I very much appreciate that.
I'd just like to make one quick comment, a little bit on the same line, but I just felt a little uncomfortable because it was the new lieutenant coming in and Bob, who's retiring, but, and I've said this to him personally, and you've talked about our first responders, I'm going to speak, I mean, everyone has been great, but I want to speak again to police and fire. You know, Bill, we all know Bill, McCarthy felt terrible that he was on vacation, and it just really bothered him, but you know, I pulled him aside and I said, "You were there. You were there, Bill, because you trained all of your staff, and they performed superbly, and he deserves the credit for that." And the police department, they were, and you've mentioned this, they were doing things that they don't usually do, like going into houses filled with gas, taking elderly and handicap people, and they performed unbelievably. So, you know, we just resigned the two chiefs' contract, and I just felt compelled to say that they, they deserved their contract renewal. They earned it, and we're really fortunate to have them both, and I think they performed unbelievably during all of this, whether away for a little bit, but then coming in in the aftermath and cleaning up with the fire chief, and same with the police chief and their staff, they were, they did a great job. And as you said, the rest of the staff, I mean, the long hours, everybody just chipped in and did what they needed to do, and it's to your credit, and so, that's my opinion.
I don't think that there was any doubt, right, that our staff truly put on many hats, and you guys were both, both DKZ and Megan Jobe were baptized by fire because you came on. I was going to say, no pun intended, but that's true, right? And I think that, you said it really well, Selectmen's body, like the whole staff, and so I appreciate you setting that tone as town manager and as their day-to-day boss, because I don't think that-- because I don't think that other communities, even impacted communities, I don't, I didn't hear the feedback of our town, of other communities having their staff just set up camp on Sunday morning on the steps of Town Hall, just to be yelled at. And I heard, so it's, this is a testament to your evaluation, I mean, I heard and saw elderly women because they didn't know who to take it out on, they just went straight for Andrew and started cussing, but they weren't mad, just because they were mad about what was happening, and I think that that says, I mean, it was in public, and we were all there, and so, and it wasn't because of anything the town did, they just didn't know where to turn, and I think that in situations like that, you need to have a steady hand, and I think that our town employees at every level helped calm people at a time where they could calm people, and they needed to get that calm because they weren't getting it from the cause of that disaster. And I think that we as Selectmen could only do so much, and so, to have that tone set, I mean, I just, I think of our building commissioner who was here, again, you know, 6:00 a.m. on a Sunday morning, and then still here at, you know, 8:00 p.m. on a Sunday night, like that's not typical, and in the private sector, you step up when you have to, but in government, I think people like to poke fun, and the reality is that when a disaster happens, when the need is there, our people stepped up, and I say "ours," North Andover's people stepped up, North Andover's town staff, so whether you had been here for 30 years or whether you had been here for 30 minutes, I mean, you still hear it. You hear people say how grateful they are, and I mean, it was a style of governance that you don't see in a community of 30,000 people, and it worked. So, I appreciate that. We literally had a meeting on the steps of Town Hall, just to be accessible to the public. I think that when you could reflect on that, that's, we really tried as a municipality to do everything we can to be a support system for our residents, and tying it back into your evaluation specifically.
Appreciate that.
I mean...
I think any person who manages people worries what's going to happen when they sort of can't be there, in this case, you know, whether it's long-term absence, illness, whatever it is. In this particular case, walking out of the building and figuratively not returning it for three months, because that's all that we were forced to do for three months, knowing that the light was still on and things every day, you know, when, you know, people and operations here continued without disruption is, in many ways, what people, maybe they saw, but maybe they didn't, but they should know about, because I think that that's one of the greatest successes of a really bad circumstance, is that everybody knew their role and continued in their role. Really great stuff.
And an important point to that is, these aren't just, I know that not everybody lives in North Andover that works in Town Hall, but I would bet that if somebody was calling the town manager's office upset just in general with what happened to their home, I would bet most weren't aware that they were talking to somebody who literally was locked out of their home perhaps for several days and didn't have hot water or gas, or literally was looking out her window at the trailer park that was set up in our town, and I'm picking on one employee, but frankly, I mean, half of our Town Hall, it felt like half, I don't know actually what the statistic is, it'd be interesting. They themselves were impacted, and so, for them to be here on the weekends and them to be helping as well outside of normal business hours, I mean, these weren't, these weren't just employees, these were people part of the, they were, they put their own lives on hold, I guess, and that's an important point, and I think that, again, that all stems from the culture that you helped instill, so, thank you. Thank you.
Any other final comments? I think all those were pretty much, I agree.
I know. We could go on all night.
We could go on all night.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
It's well appreciated.
Great performance. Okay, so, do we have a motion to...
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we, with the government's authority, directly, that we approve the performance evaluation of our town manager, Andrew Mailer. The annual performance evaluation of our town manager.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, we already voted on the fire chief's contract. The next step is to vote on the police chief's contract. I think we already had some comments that we negotiated that at the same time, and already discussed it a bit. Do we have anything else to say, or we issued a motion to...
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the police chief's contract, between the town and Police Chief Charles Gray, again, without thanks for his service.
Does that have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, the next item under governmental reports is, just to give a quick overview of the process for assessing properties and requesting an abatement. We put this on the agenda because I know I, and I'm sure my fellow Selectmen have gotten a number of comments from residents asking about their property tax bill and their assessments, and I just wanted to address some of those comments. I don't know, Mr. Mailer, if you have some.
What I think, if I can, what I recommend is I'll give sort of an overview of the process, its intention, its goals and outcomes, identify for residents the opportunities they have if they have questions about their value proceeding, and also say that in the next several days, we'll be placing on a similar FAQ to the comments I'm going to make on the town's website. I'll also identify what's already available on the town's website, and then if there are board questions from that, I'll try to leave this to five to seven minutes, I'll talk quickly, and then any questions you may have that are left unanswered is a function of that.
Could I ask one thing?
Sure.
Just to sort of back up slightly from that, just to kind of set the foundation. Can you maybe spend a little, just a minute on how the assessment is made in general?
That's the essence of what I'm talking about.
Okay, I wanted to make sure it wasn't just the abatement process.
No, 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 no. It's almost all process, leading up to.
Okay, the process.
So, let's start with a basic fact. The vote of the Board of Selectmen every year in December-ish, November, December, is simply the factor, how much is commercial and how much is residential. All of the legwork leading into that, so the Selectmen, and I think the public should know that, the Selectmen don't control value. That's not your statutory authority, you have no impact on that, there's a process very clearly defined, and we're going to talk about that process. The process that leads to that December vote is that data is collected for a period of time, so let me give you specific dates. In December, the fiscal 2019 data that leads to assessments is based on data collected through January 1st of 2018. So, the assessed values that drive the fiscal 2019 taxes, right, beginning in the January 1 bill, is data collected up through January 1st of 18. So, the data is already, I'm not stale, but it is always, it's not forward-looking, it's reflective of the actions or the activities in the real estate market. It is not the goal of the assessment process to predict what you guessed values. So, what residents need to know is when they see their assessed value, it's a reflection of a process I'm going to describe, but there isn't a predictive nature to it, to say, while we think next year, values are going to go up, okay? So, I'll run through this and any questions you may have. It is the assessor's role, they must by statute, value all real and personal property in a community at their full and fair cash value. Mass appraisal is the process, and the term mass in this case is not Massachusetts, it means mass or large. The mass appraisal process used by every Massachusetts city and town, that process is used to create property assessments, so every community follows the same process. And this process, by the way, is not just unique to Massachusetts. Mass computer-aided appraisal is the standard nationally. Assessments are based on analysis of North Andover's entire real estate market for a specified time period. That time period is January 1st of 2017 through January 1st of 2018. That is the period in time in which they're capturing data, and then that doesn't affect taxes until almost a year later, okay? The study guides are setting evaluation parameters that are used to calculate property values for the entire town. It differs from what someone may see on a bank appraisal that's done as part of one single real estate process. This isn't similar, it's similar, but it has some different characteristics, because in essence, we have to value, or the assessor is charged with evaluating all properties, and they can't do it in the same way to say, here's two comparatives, plus and minus, like you'd get in a standard real estate appraisal process. It should be known that every community in Massachusetts uses a company to do this work. They provide software and data analysis. There are major players in this industry. North Andover uses Patriot Properties. They've been in the business for 33 years, they have 230 clients, they're a widely respected company in this business, and what they do is approved every year for other communities in Massachusetts, and it's a standard used by one or two or three other companies in Massachusetts, and the Department of Revenue identifies this as one of those companies that does large-scale work for the Commonwealth. So, by process, first, we need to understand what market value is, right, because that's the standard they have to use, full and fair cash value, and that's described as, it's the most probable price for which a property will sell in an open and competitive market that a willing buyer will pay for a property to a willing seller. So, they have to be what we call arms-length transactions. This is the data that's put as an input into the process to determine values. Can't be, I sold it to a relative or a cousin, there can't be some other characteristics. So, data that comes from the Registry of Deeds about transactions, sales transactions are all captured. We get copies of deeds that come through from the Registry of Deeds for regular sales transactions, and then the other additional information that may be added into the mix. For instance, maybe you upgraded your kitchen, or maybe you did other improvements. All of those building permits then also provided to the assessor's office for the purpose of determining what full and fair cash value is. For every property, it's about neighborhood, style of home, size of home, condition of home, all of those are factors that play into it. So, your neighborhood may be that you live in a particular neighborhood that's valued in a certain way, maybe you have a four-bedroom house, and your neighbor down the street has a four-bedroom house, but it could be that one's a split and one's a colonial, right? It could be that one has a condition assigned to it that's different than another. All of those are factors that go into determining value. But I think the most driving thing that people understand is about arms-length sales transactions. What is the market doing during the period we're capturing that data? Again, we're capturing that data as relates to the most recent property tax bills, from January 1st of 17 through January 1st of 18. Nothing after that. I think that's what's most important. So, the state says that we have to go through this process. Every year, the assessors look at those sales transactions and typically make interim-year adjustments, in other words, minor modifications based upon trends, based on what they see. But every five years, it used to be every three years up until two or three years ago, every five years, there needs to be a more intensive view of what's happening in the marketplace. The data has to be captured, placed into a system, evaluated, this is all statistically driven. How close to the values that we're finding, how close are they to this 100% value that we have to meet? State doesn't allow those values to be less than or more than 10% than either side of 100%. So, when you place in the sales data and you look at comparative properties and you look at the current assessments, the state says that plus or minus 10%, very, very often, on the downside of the 10%, closer to the 90%, we cannot assign a value to properties which is not statistically proven to be within 10% of 100% every five years. So, if the, if the sales data shows that your style of home in your neighborhood is $500,000, then that value, the state does not allow that value to be lower than 10% or 90% of that $500,000 amount. And every five years through this process, all of this data is then reviewed by the Commonwealth and the Department of Revenue through the Bureau of Assessing, and they have staff that look at everybody's data every five years. They do interim reviews as well. We're in one of those reval years as part of this process. So, the state would have taken all of the data, the statistical analysis, all that sort of funny stuff that some of us get and some of us don't, and will have taken all that data before they approved the values. You don't see those, that data in terms of providing that value, the decision you guys make in terms of deciding the mix between residential and commercial until it's been completely approved by the Commonwealth. So, all the data collected and all of the financial analysis done by a major player in the business is then evaluated by the Commonwealth to determine if it's within those parameters. In this particular valuation period, as you've seen from a lot of feedback, the market has been increasing, and the dramatic increase in market values is one of the reasons why you saw a fairly significant decrease in the property tax rate, because there are three, two primary parts to property tax bills, the valuation and the property tax rate. And so, some folks ask, well, my property value in my tax bill went up by more than 2.5%, that's not allowed. What 2.5% says is, the aggregate amount of taxes raised by any one community cannot increase by more than 2.5% plus new growth, won't bore you with that one, right? It doesn't say that any property cannot go up, it says in total, the property taxes we raised cannot go up by more than 2.5%. So, you could have someone's property tax bill increase by, you know, 5%, 7%, 10%, 12% as long as in total, the amount of property taxes raised in a community any one year doesn't exceed 2.5%. It's not property by property, it's community-wide, okay? So, when my neighbor's house sells, will this price determine my assessment? Not necessarily. So, this is the kind of question that would be asked. As explained, and I can certainly go into some level of detail, sales are analyzed townwide. An example of what could be relevant is that there are several sales in area indicating that the assessments were too low compared to sales prices. So, it doesn't necessarily mean that. Does it mean it could happen? Sure. If you're seeing trending, you know, properties typically from one year to the next or every five-year period, they trend together. You don't often see one neighborhood go up, not in a place like North Andover. You could see some more urban communities where there's a shop increase, properties along the water with the water values increase where others stay level, but generally in North Andover, although it doesn't necessarily mean if your neighbor's properties are increasing in value, yours will, most commonly, there will be a general trending in that direction. I think most folks have seen that. We talked a little bit about what the calendar year is and the limits of 2.5. I would say that in addition of the annual change in values and the every-five-year more intensive process with a review by the DOR, we are required to do a full measure and list every 10 years. That requires that assessing or assessing staff or contractors go into your house and have to evaluate that. Sometimes through that process, they'll have to give multiple notifications, sometimes folks don't like people in their homes and will not allow entry or not schedule appointment. In the end, most commonly, that's not a great decision, and the reasons why is typically then the assessor will lean toward the higher value of these choices, and will have to go through an abatement process. So, again, every year, there's a change in values to capture where market is. Every five years, there's a full revaluation process, this is one of those years. All of that is driven by data, statistics, and sales. All of that is reviewed by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and then every 10 years, you go through this full measure and list process, which requires entry into homes and gives those kind of updates. Sometimes, we know it doesn't happen too often, folks do make improvements to their homes, maybe the building permit was not, did not capture that value, and the idea is that if, in order to be equitable across a community, you want every property to be fairly valued, because if I own a property, and Rosemary owns a property, and my property is not valued at, and your property is valued at 90% of what it should be, and mine's valued at 60%, and we have the same kind of properties, you're not going to be so happy that my property isn't valued. So, that's part of the reason there's a measure and list every 10 years, to capture what may not have been captured. Land values can vary in terms of how they're captioned in terms of data. We don't have a lot of open sale of land parcels, but that can influence the value of land. It's probably easiest for most residents to recognize that it's the improvements to the land that can change more dramatically, because again, from one house to the next, one could be larger than the other. All of this process takes place with the help of our assessing department leading the charge, and in turn, typically some level of consulting support to make sure we're evaluating the data properly, and that happens in the process that I identified. Couple of other important pieces of information that more relate to the abatement process, but I can get into those. One is that there is a difference between what we call abatements and exemptions. So, the abatement process allows a resident an opportunity to challenge the value, right? An exemption process gives certain people, depending on criteria, an automatic relief from certain tax value. Exemptions are for things like blind folks, low-income seniors, seniors, surviving spouse with minor children, veterans with disabilities, those are, that's information that any resident can find on the town's website, and they may be eligible for. Those are exemptions, not abatements. As relates to the abatement process, the law is very clear, and we keep on repeating it, but it's really important. Arguing the value or challenging the value in a platform other than going to the assessors and filling out a form which they can find online, and providing it to the assessors from when they receive the third quarter tax bill, which is around January 1, no later than February 1, is the only process to challenge value. It works really well to communicate things. We're huge supporters of social media, Facebook, Twitter, and the like to communicate, but in the end, this board does not control values, I do not control values. A process directed by the assessor and overseen by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is what determines values. what determines values. And anybody who wants to challenge the value has a right to do that, but it's a very specific process. So in addition to having to file the abatement for that one-month period, they must pay their tax bill. That's an essential component of this. I know it's really difficult. I've always, in my own mindset, this doesn't make any sense. If I'm unhappy with my tax bill, can't I not pay it, right? It's almost counterintuitive, but that is the law. If you do not pay your tax bill during that 30-day period and you challenge your assessment, you default your right to challenge it. You must pay the bill, challenge it, and then the bill would be adjusted. I know for folks that may not feel right, but that is the process that I would hate for folks because they're convinced the value is wrong. Even if they're correct, that it determines the value is wrong, to miss an opportunity because they didn't pay the tax bill. So that's a requirement under the statute. The really interesting process about, part about the assessing process and the valuation process, it's almost all driven by statute. These aren't arbitrary decisions. These aren't things that are specific to North Andover. These are things specific to the Commonwealth and in many cases, outside the Commonwealth. And folks need to recognize that. So right now, on the town's website, residents should be aware that they can find the value of their property in the form of a list. Anytime you do the five-year revale, a list of everybody's, every address and everybody's, the property owner and the value of that property is listed on the town's website in the form of a spreadsheet of sorts. You can look up anybody's values. All public information. I know folks don't like that either, but it's all public. In addition to that, our system has property card information. You can look up any address, your address, your neighbor's address, someone across town's address, people you don't know, whatever address you want, and you can locate what we call a property card. It lists the assessed value, the breakdown of how much is the property, are the improvements of the property, how much is the land, when the last sale date was, the value of that sale. All of that data is always available to residents if they want to feel more comfortable about how their value is established. And in the end, the best way to do that is to go and file an abatement if they feel like the value is wrong. Then someone says, well, I go to a town board, they assess the value, and in turn, of course, they're going to deny my value. Well, they still have to prove why if there's not standard information to that. And there's an appeal process. In the appeal process, if you file for an abatement, it's rejected. You can go to what's called the Appellate Tax Board. And that information for how to go to the Appellate Tax Board or apply for that appeal is right on the town's website. That is a state agency. We may or may not go in and defend our value, but you have a right to a third party to challenge the assessor's decision whether or not your request for an abatement should be allowed. So there is another step, if possible. It all is requisite on paying your tax bill, then going to the assessor and starting a process. So it gives you at least a general overview of process. I can answer specific questions about that, but I wanted to give you.
A couple of things, though. If you did get an abatement last year, does it mean that's going to carry through to the next year?
That's a great question. So yes, it may or may not, and the best way to do it is double-check. And I don't like may or may not answers, but if you went and challenged the value last year, that value change was made to your property value. I would automatically go again, and here's why. Because if you were, if this was not a revale year and last year, your property was assessed at $500,000, you went in and filed for an abatement and they changed it to $475,000. And this year was not a revale year, you wouldn't need to go again because the $475,000 would be the new value. But where we went through a whole revaluation process, that will not have traveled in in almost every case because they would have revalued the property again. So if you had your property value changed last year through an appeal process, I would absolutely recommend any of those folks to do it again because we went through a revale process. Where in most cases, if we weren't, then that value would have come through into the most current year.
But also to a couple of things that would probably, you should go check out. For example, if you have a three-season porch and they have that written as heated space, there's a reason to challenge, you know, no, this isn't part of my living square footage. Or even a deck, I've seen people where it was a deck and they included that. It's an open deck. This is years ago. So just things that, those, or if they say you have three baths and all you have is two baths, then that would be, you know, sometimes there's just mistakes made.
Well, I would say the best way to manage that from person to person is get on the town's website. Because you can look up the property card, you can see what your property, you can see all that information about the property. So it actually gives you a two-dimensional sketch of the property and an attached photo. It'll tell you the approximate livable square foot. It'll tell you the general construction condition of the properties. In most cases, the construction condition of properties in a place like North Andover will be a high, in other words, there's a poor construction level and there's different levels of that. Most of that will be pretty consistent. But you can do some initial homework, see if it represents what you think your property is. Is it the right approximate square foot of the land? Is the house about right? Is the number of bathrooms is correct as it indicate that there is more rooms in other ways? So that whole property card will contain that information.
So a couple of months ago, I received a letter from the town with that information in there asking if it was accurate. And in my case, there were some inaccuracies on it that I corrected and wrote on the document and sent it back. So was that part of the, so this happened in 2018, which is a few months back. So when I looked at my property card on the assessors database, it is correct. But when I got that letter, it was incorrect. So was that also, was that an opportunity for folks to correct any anomalies on their property card as well?
Not everyone necessarily would have seen one of those and there would have been something that may have triggered it, but it was an opportunity to make that correction. So as part of, and this is not affecting you guys, but folks should know this from a transparency perspective. For many years, we used what I'd refer to as a homegrown CAMA or computer-aided mass appraisal product. We were only one of 40 communities. We were the second largest of the 40 communities that used that product. The remaining, the state originally initiated it to make sure that western Mass states are very small states that couldn't do this work and couldn't afford it, they provided this alternative. We were one and only one of two communities, I think, north of 10,000 in population that used this older and antiquated system. As part of the process to make sure, the state was then discontinuing the use of that product. They actually had recommended an alternative product, which is actually not widely used, as widely used as we like. And so we went sure, we moved forward with selecting a couple of years ago, a replacement for that process that was being discontinued by the state. And what we went with was one of the two, what I would call brand names, companies with the most experience, widely used by most folks in the Commonwealth. And through that transition process, each of the records was evaluated to make sure it captured building permit data and other data. And I think through that process, if cases, if there was some discrepancy in the file, they may have notified individual residents about that. But residents can still do that today to the abatement process simply by looking at their property card, which they have access to 24/7. And that's not just about the revaluation process, it's just what exists as data today.
So I think what you just said is a key piece of information, that that, going by transitioning to this new software, that each property card was reviewed.
Yes.
And I think, you know, that is something that hadn't happened in a long time either. And I think, you know, there were a lot of questions and a lot of people's comments were, you know, I understand the valuation of my property, I just, why was it such a big jump in, from one year to the next? And I think a lot of that may be that because of what you just stated, that the accuracy of that software now, it could have had some impact on that. And, you know, other things, people have commented on, is, you know, I have had an attached garage for years, I've never seen it on my property card, now I'm seeing it on my property card. So that's another, you know, I think that was something else that people hadn't been used to in the past. And I think it's, again, because of the accuracy of this new product that we have.
You know, it's also the market, too. We really did have a pretty big spike.
Oh, yeah, no doubt, no doubt, no doubt.
Which is, that's the good news and the bad news. The good news is your property's gone up quite a bit. The bad news is, so is your tax bill. But the one thing you try to, you know, politely just say, so this is the assessment. Now, if you were to going to put your house on the market last year, what would you have put it on for? And so often, they'll say, oh, probably more than that. So you kind of, it's tough. And you're right, Dick, I think the people were just kind of just shocked at, you know, how much it went up. And believe it or not, there were still a lot of people in town where it stayed the same, it went down a little, but those who did go up, it's.
I think we have to be honest, that people aren't just upset. I mean, it's an easy thing to talk about, assessments. It's a different thing when, I'm going to quote the town manager, one of your favorite sayings, and it's actually something I apply often now to my personal life, under-promise and over-deliver. When we go and we pursue headlines saying that we have a $300 median tax cut, then the average person thinks, oh gee, I'm going to get a tax cut. The reality was 3,158 single-family homeowners in North Andover saw a bill that was up, that went up. And that's not even counting the people who fall into that gap of not getting quite a $300 deduction, but still getting a deduction. And so when you're setting an expectation, when we, and this falls on us, this is the intangible messaging piece, when we're going out there and projecting outside of North Andover that there's this median reduction, that's great. But we still have to remember that the people who are reading those articles, the people who are being impacted are people that live in North Andover. And so it's, I have found, despite having a different position on the board, I have found that it's been difficult to communicate with people because we set that expectation. The board, the community, set the expectation that the average person would see a reduction. And so when somebody's opening their tax bill and seeing, you know, a $1,000 increase and they're a single-family homeowner, they don't understand why. And the fact that, it is because of assessments. It is completely outside of our control. There is not anything we can do. It doesn't change this feeling for them that their expectation wasn't bad.
The average was a reduction, though, to be clear. For single-family homes, I looked at the data to confirm, and the average was a reduction. Should we have perhaps been more clear and said, even though the average is a reduction, that doesn't mean that some people won't have an increase? Yes, we should have done that.
We didn't know that at that point.
But we also didn't.
Well, so I guess, a follow-up question, because I know for me, I'd like to see this data prior to future votes. I think it's salient. So this vote happened, there was obviously a robust social media discussion about this. I mean, there were certainly people who I think were primed, if you owned a multifamily property or a condo, they were at least anticipating that they were going to get some type of increase in their bill. It was the single-family homeowners that I think kept pointing to, well, wait a minute, I thought that this was coming. And it's important, we say median, we don't say average. And either way, whether it's median or average, that doesn't mean that you necessarily wouldn't be getting an increase. I just would like to see moving forward, for instance, next year's discussion, I'd like to see the data home by home because it just would be helpful to give you an idea because, as we know, median is simply just the middle mark.
It's a statistical measure, right? I would actually, my personal recommendation of the board would be, don't say it at all. I think we often, it's a little bit like the conversation this morning at breakfast. It was a big breakfast, by the way. I wasn't just having breakfast, but it was a breakfast of several hundred. But there was a comment made without identifying one community or sort of, it just was interesting to me that the conversation was, a goal was to drop the tax rate. So we start with a basic assumption, we should start, and you should, the elected and appointed folks should all start with the basic assumptions, right? Basic assumption, tax bills increase. Like this is the whole death in taxes thing, right? So it's a general assumption. I would say that as it relates to your tax classification hearing, it should only be about what moves from here to here. And we're providing you the data, so I'm casting the blame on us in fairness. We shouldn't even show you what that average is because it's really not what you're talking about. The classification is how many dollars are moving from commercial to residential. It really isn't intended to be a discussion about what the average tax bill is. Because that's not really what, you're not setting the tax bill, you're setting the classification. All the rest is sort of pre-cooked. Most folks don't realize, you know, that the decision you're making in December for a January tax bill has to do with a budget that's already approved. Most folks, I know we bump into this, come in and believe that the selectmen are controlling the actual tax bill, when the tax bill is in many ways approved by the town meeting in the May before your vote even takes place. They don't even realize that your actions are reactive, they're all about the waiting. So in many ways, leaving off the sort of those averages isn't necessarily a bad thing. I mean, you can communicate them, but I completely agree with you. In this case, given that it was a revale with a lot of market change and I think improved equity, so when, the garage example is an interesting one. Because if I lived next door with the same house with the garage and the garage was on my property card but not on your property card, I'm paying an unfair share. So I think equity was increased, but our messaging, we focus so heavily on single-family property tax bills and rates and all those things, that in the end, the classification, it's almost like those should be two different conversations. The classification about what the impact may be and a completely different conversation about what that means. Because you're right, what happens is people focus on the tax rate went down, a little bit like today's conversation. I would never say to you that our goal is to decrease the tax rate because it's.
You can do that, that's out of the job.
I can, we can decrease the tax rate all day long. How much is the bill, right? That's all, as property taxpayers, that's all we care about. How much is the bill? And if I told you the tax rate was $100,000, but you're only going to value my property $1,000, I'd take that all day long as opposed to a tax bill with a tax rate that's $10 of property value of $1 million.
But that's, and we talk about the median tax bill, but it's the median from this year to this year, and it's if the house is valued the same, then the tax.
That makes sense, right?
But that's not the case.
But that's not the case.
Because you've got the tax rate going down with the property value going up, so that changes.
But the majority of the single-family homes didn't have some sort of, as I think Phil said, it was what, 3,000 and we have about what?
It's a majority.
We have over 10,000.
It was almost 50/50.
There were 6,315, there were 6,314 single-family homes. 3,158 got an increase in their tax bill. I mean, so that's, let's be clear, that's our commitment, leading up to it, was that you would get the median homeowner.
Well, I would disagree with the commitment part. I completely agree with the messaging. There was no commitment that anybody's tax bill was doing anything.
It is semantics, but at the end of the day, the person getting these bills, read the headlines.
Yes, I agree.
Read the quotes. And so they're expecting, I shouldn't say that they're necessarily giving all that much thought to their tax bill until they're getting it and seeing an increase. And then they're referencing, well gee, I thought I was going to get a tax cut. And then you're right, when you end up seeing a bill, and I'm only looking at single-family homes where, you know, some of these homes, I mean, I'm all the way at the end of the spreadsheet where we're talking about a much more substantial amount, but, I mean, there were people that got $3,000, $4,000, $5,000 increases and they were existing.
And I, so I would say that, so my advice again is, spending a classification meeting, poring through that kind of data is not the point of the classification meeting. You're just deciding the shift. Focus on data that shows you what the shift means. Because in reality, here's the unusual nature of this year, and I can tell you for the entire Essex County, the fact that 50% of the properties are seeing a tax decrease, I'm way out here on a long plank, but my guess is, we may be the only community, we even saw 50% of the communities go down, but the messaging reflected everybody getting a decrease. You're exactly right about that. And I think what I would take from that is, one, a good corrective point that we didn't provide enough data to show that. It's very fair. And two, the more time the board spends in a classification meeting, talking about what's going to happen to your property and your property, isn't the point of the classification. Point of the classification is how many millions of dollars you want to shift between residential and commercial. And that number, and that number's been on around $3 million. The rest of the data is already sort of.
Baked in.
Baked in, it's baked in through assess files. So I completely agree with you that our messaging left the impression everybody was getting a tax cut. That's fair. And I would say to avoid it is not just to provide you more data that shows what happens at every house. It's focus the classification hearing on what it is. It's shifting $3 million from this pot to this pot. That's your vote. Either you're shifting $3 million, or 3.1 million, or 3.2 million. That's what you're doing in that meeting. Because that other data isn't really about anything that you're doing at that meeting. It's just my thoughts, but I, either way.
All I would say is if we had, if we'd started off with how you gave that rundown at the beginning, you flipped the message around, we started with that.
Agreed.
I think we might have, we wouldn't have even have gone down that road because you really foreclosed, you closed the door to that path. Because as you explain the process, it takes us away from those sort of calculations. So maybe part of the lesson here is maybe start off with, because I don't think we can, I personally don't think that we should avoid explaining what it is. I understand that it's baked in, but again, I think the citizenry, group of citizenry still looks for us, but you were there, you're supposed to understand it, you represent a selectman. And I think if we only narrow the conversation down just to that shift, then I think we don't do as much justice as we could to explaining what your tax bill is. So maybe the lesson is, front-load it with your sort of explanation.
I would bifurcate it.
Okay.
I think if you have the, because as soon as one of you mentions that the average tax bill goes down, the person on the other end of the message, and that can be us and the media and the people watching television, that becomes immediate focus. So all I'm suggesting, I completely agree with you. I think you bifurcate the conversation, you separate the conversation. You want an annual review, the meeting before the classification meeting, about process and values and that kind of stuff? Let's do it every, every year in the meeting before, so folks understand the process, so that everybody understands what's happening at the meeting, because, although I certainly take the responsibility for the data we give you, I can tell you historically, things like what the average single-family tax bill is going to be and how it has changed, is often recommended by the elected boards, not just here in North Andover, but in other places, because that's the first question that boards typically ask, what is it going to mean to the property? So we put out some statistical measure and tell you that the average is going down. I stand by the data, it's accurate, but it's not the message, right? And so I just separate those conversations between the technical process and then the classification. But I think you're right, every year, there should be that explanation so people know it. And they should know what is available to them. All that data is available to them online, all the time, they should know that.
As complicated as this is, when we get into trying to explain shift and how commercial property is assessed, which isn't the same as residential, we're going to have, it's going to be real estate 101 every year, because it, you know, it's tough enough explaining this, but then when you try to explain the shift, it's like...
It's true. I think it's important, because then at least people, people learn about it, because I still, despite engaging directly with individuals on social media and explaining, and I think, I think doing a good job, and by, it's my explanation...
You're actually doing a good job.
Of explaining what the shift means, you still see comments like, you know, "Why did they put the rate up more for condos and multifamilies?" And so, I mean, it's a pretty black and white statement that you can rebut, you know? The rate for any person who owns a residential property in North Andover is $13.41. But it's just, I think it goes back to, again, that initial messaging, so I think that that's a good point. If we divvy it up over meetings to provide even more information, but not muddy what is the, what's the discussion? Because we can't go, I mean, there were conversations about, you know, selectmen need to change it, and my question is, you know, what are we changing? Like, what action do you want the board to take? Because we can't go out and value property, and that's a whole, you and selectmen, both said it really well. If you were to put your home on the market right now, are you saying that your home's assessed value is more than you would be able to put on the market for? It doesn't keep them, it doesn't make you feel warm at night, because you're not, most of these people aren't putting their homes on the market.
But sometimes, it is warm. Sometimes you look at these, "Wow, they way overpaying." I mean, I've seen this in my business all the time, and sometimes you're like, "Wow."
You just be cautioning about the term "all the time." I would say that it's rare that there's extra bathrooms. I don't want to leave the impression that the data is...
No, no, I understand what you're saying, but I see it in...
I just hear them all the time, I get a little cautious about it.
It's not totally unusual, but it does stick out, and vice versa. Sometimes you're like, "Gee, their taxes are kind of low," you know, and...
But I think that's, I think we're all saying the same thing. I think as soon as we identified this property tax decrease and have a single-family decrease, that became the message. That wasn't the intended message, nor the intended purpose of the meeting. I think the assessing data is typically ready in advance of the meeting, so that kind of data and the statistical analysis about what's happening with properties, hey, by the way, the average property is going up 6%, 7% from, here's the sales data, all that can be had so that the classification meeting becomes a classification meeting, and folks don't link that discussion to believing the board has this sort of magic wand to say, "Hey, change all the values to something else," because I think, I think that would be problematic. But I think it's fair in this case that as soon as the average number was sort of communicated, the whole message came on both sides. The condo folks weren't happy, either from what I've been involved in. So it's a very fair point, and that it needs to be, the communication should have been better.
Okay, so hopefully that clarified the process, and for anyone watching, the reminder, the abatement deadline is February 1st.
And there's no second chances.
No second chances.
You have to do it by that date.
Yeah. Okay. I, no old business, no new business. I don't think we have anything under town managers report, unless, or something I haven't thought of. Any final comments from any selectmen?